Will the tellers please come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, if you would hold up your cards please to be counted, the tellers will now take a count. You should have a red card for tonight's meeting. Please hold them up high so that the tellers can count them. Do not put them down by your side. While I'm waiting for my tellers, I was remiss last night in not thanking the high school junior ROTC representing the colors or recognizing the Wareham High School choir. So I apologize for missing that last night and I appreciate having them here and appreciate having them do what they did for us. In the front?
Forty, four zero.
In the front, four zero. To my right?
Forty-nine.
To my right, forty-nine. In the center?
One oh seven.
In the center, one hundred and seven. And to my left? Two sixty-one. We have two hundred and sixty-one voters in the hall. We have a quorum. I will now call this meeting to order. Again, if there are any non-registered voters, please sit down here in this section to my Last night I went over the rules for town meeting. Those rules still apply to tonight's meeting. I just want to remind you of a couple important things. If you need to enter or exit the auditorium, make sure you use this doorway on my left. And if perchance we have to leave the room as a body and have to come back, make sure you come back through this doorway and this doorway only. When standing at the microphone, if we could only have two people at a time, and that's for safety sake, to keep the aisle open. Please turn off all of your cell phones and as a reminder, there is no food or drink allowed in the auditorium, although hard candies are permissible. Before we begin, Article 2, Section 2.6 of the Town Charter states that "All department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent to warrant articles. If any such person is deterred by illness or other reasonable cause, he shall designate a deputy to attend." So I will now call the roll call of the departments. I see that we have our Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee in place, Board of Health, Assessing, Community Development, Conservation, Data Processing, EMS, Inspection Services, Municipal Maintenance, Police Department, Shellfish Habermaster, Town Accountant, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, Library, Water Pollution Control, and the School Superintendent. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, last evening in our lottery system, Article 6 came in and was pulled a little late in the evening. So I asked this body what your preference would be, whether you wanted to stay and act on that article or to hold it off to become the first article tonight. We did take a vote and the vote was in the affirmative that the feeling of the people was that they didn't want to get into that article and then have to stay beyond the hour of ten o'clock. So the first article before us tonight is Article 6. And after we take up Article 6, we will be taking up Article 7 because Article 7 is tied to Article 6. So if you would please turn to Article 6 in your Finance Committee report and I will accept a motion on Article 6.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of...
Yeah. You just...
Is that better? Okay. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five million, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars from levy, state, and local receipts, transfer ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars from available funds, and eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars from the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, as more particularly set forth in the Finance Committee Warrant Report Handbook.
I have a motion before us and a second to speak to the article. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Tonight, the voters of this town will be given the opportunity to voice their opinions on the future of this community. Some will be in support of the seniors of this community and say that funding should be given to the Council on Aging, even if it means reducing educational spending. After all, the seniors are who built this great nation. The school supporters may say that funding should go to education, even if it means reducing senior services because the seniors were provided a public education that allowed them to succeed. And that is the contract of our nation. We all deserve a quality education. Police supporters will say that money should be taken from the library because there's no greater importance than public safety in a community. And who wants to live in an unsafe community? Library supporters may say that money should be taken from the police budget because the library is the heart and soul of a community and helps keep youth off the street, which reduces crime. What sort of community doesn't have a library? If you're sensing a pattern, you understand what we've seen. The schools, Council on Aging, library, and police are all part of what makes an excellent community, and they're in many ways interdependent. But we can only spend the dollars that we have. And we've cut and cut and cut. Probably no two people agree on what should be cut and what should be funded. That is where the contingent budget comes in. We are asking to make this a better community. Services for seniors, an operational library, money to provide a quality education, and money to provide you, the taxpayer, with a safe community. We've changed the healthcare splits to help reduce increases to the town that the town is experiencing. We started the process to move from being self-insured to being part of a large group that will reduce our exposure to high-cost claims and create future savings. We're seeking to perform capital upgrades that not only receive subsidies, but they will generate future savings. We're looking to professionalize the town by having the right staff and financial positions and having a human resources director for an almost sixty-million-dollar company. But unlike a business, we cannot simply raise our price to meet the costs of providing services. We have to ask our consumers permission. We need the voters of this community to tell us what they want. We need the voters of this community to vote that they are willing to pay for better services, willing to support the seniors, willing to support a quality education, willing to support a functional library, and willing to support a safer community. Remember, a yes vote on Article 7 tonight does not mean the contingent budget passes. It mainly means, or only means, that a ballot question will be put on and the voters of this town at large will be given the opportunity on whether to pass that or not. Thank you.
Would the Superintendent like to speak to the budget article?
Madam Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, and citizens of Wareham, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with the information about the Wareham Public School FY15 budget. Providing students of Wareham with a quality education is our mission. Students are the center of our actions and will remain at the forefront of all we do. You've heard the saying, "Children are our future." However, we, the citizens of Wareham, are their future. The FY15 budget has been developed around four pillars: literacy, mathematics, technology, safe and secure schools. These four pillars define the educational experiences and opportunities which we offer to students in our Wareham school system. Our priority is to ensure that every system, every child in our system receives a quality education, which is second to none. Our staff is highly dedicated and committed to meeting the needs of all students. During this budget process, I've worked closely with our principals, director, our school committee, town administrator, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee. I would like to thank each one of them for their hard work, commitment, cooperation, and dedication. Our budget process began in earnest during the month of November. It was our goal to develop a level service budget. We did. For us to continue to offer all the programs and services which are currently offered, the budget amount needed was twenty-eight million, four hundred, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Unfortunately, the revenue was not available to support this amount and reduction in the proposed budget were made. In late January, the committee approved the budget in the amount of twenty-seven million, seven hundred, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. As we continued to work with town officials, we realized additional reductions were necessary as the revenue to support the proposed FY15 budget was not going to be available. The district's proposed FY15 budget was reduced again to our FY14 budget amount of twenty-six million, eight hundred, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, which we bring to you this evening for your approval. The school budget has been reduced in the amount of approximately one million, six hundred, ten thousand dollars. Reductions will be made by closing East Early Childhood Center, reconfiguring Special Education, reduction of supplies and materials, and the reduction of approximately thirty-four staff in the areas of administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria, employees, and secretaries. While the reductions will impact our schools, our students will continue to receive a high-quality education. We will work efficiently and will continue to work collaboratively with all members in our town. During my first several weeks in August, I met citizens and some of the comments I heard, "It's the Wareham way. There are too many administrators in this system. Teachers are paid too much. The school has hidden pots of money." What I found, the citizens and our employees care about our students and our town. I have found an enormous pride existing in our community. To address too many administrators, if you compare our district to surrounding communities, Bourne, Fairhaven, Swansea, ORR, Freetown, Lakeville, Wareham has equal to or fewer administrators and administrative supports than do these districts. Teachers are paid too much money. Again, when comparing to surrounding towns, the pay which we offer is equal or less than. And finally, the school has hidden pots of money. During the past months, we've worked and will continue to work to be transparent, to provide details, and to work collaboratively with town officials, school employees, and the citizens of our town. And I assure you, we have no hidden pots of money. We strive each day to improve. We're always open to constructive comments and suggestions, and we clearly understand the need to work collaboratively and to be active partners in our community. Our town, our students deserve the very best we can possibly give. Again, I thank you for your support, both financially and in all the kind ways this community encourages and supports our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the Finance Committee want to make a comment now or do you want to wait till your recommendation? May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 9-0-0. We reviewed the balanced budget and we have to recommend favorable action, but it should be noted that the balanced budget includes drastic cuts to services, minimal capital funding, and no appropriation to the stabilization fund. In that regard, the budget falls far short of meeting the needs of the citizens of Wareham.
Ladies and gentlemen, how we handle the budget is I will go through each line item in the budget. If you have any questions or concerns about a line item, please say out loud "hold" and we will hold that line and then we will come back to it. Once we have gone through all of the expenses and gone to ask for the holds, we will then take a vote on those lines for which no one has any questions, and then we will go back and take them one by one.
Madam Moderator? The budget, the balanced budget is Appendix 1 in the book.
Your budget is Appendix 1 in the blue book. So if you want to turn to Appendix 1?
Page 2.
On page 2. Town meeting wages. Town meeting expenses. Selectmen's wages. Selectmen's expenses. Town Administrator wages. Town Administrator expenses. Finance Committee expenses. Reserve Fund. Town Accountant wages. Town Accountant expenses. Audit. Assesses wages. Assesses expenses. Revaluation expense. Treasurer wages. Treasurer expenses. General Services wages. General Services expenses. Legal Services. Personnel Services wages. Personnel Services expenses. Personnel Director. Information Management Technology wages. Information Management Technology expenses. Information Management Technology Communication. Town Clerk wages. Town Clerk expenses. Elections and registrations wages. Elections and registrations expenses. Town Planning wages. Town Planning expenses. Sick leave bonus wages. Police wages. Police expenses. Capital. Inspection Services wages. Inspection Services expenses. Animal Control wages. Animal Control expenses. Shellfish Habermaster wages. Shellfish Habermaster expenses. Beaches and lifeguards. Herring agents. Municipal Maintenance and Public Buildings wages. Municipal Maintenance and Public Buildings. Snow and Ice wages. Snow and Ice expenses. Streetlights general. Recycling wages. Recycling expenses. Board of Health wages. Board of Health expenses. Council on Aging wages. Council on Aging expenses. Commission on Disabilities. Veterans Council. Community Events. Library wages. Library expenses. Historical District Commission. That's where we end. Under Education, net school spending. Non-net school spending. Under Fixed Costs. Debt principal. Debt interest long-term. Debt interest short-term. Other fixed costs. Serpide assessment. Employee benefits. Retirement contribution, including layuna. Work is compensation with town insurance. Town Insurance general liability. Unemployment. Medical insurance. Life insurance. Offsets county and state assessments. Veterans assessments. Under Other Budget Articles... No, those don't get voted. Those are in warrant articles. The same with the Enterprises, that's in a separate article, correct?
That's right. And then we have all revolving expenses.
And the other revolving expenses. So the only line that anyone has asked about to be held is number 163 and 164, the Council on Aging. Before I ask for a vote on all of the lines that no one wanted to speak to, is there anybody else? I will now ask for a motion on the budget to accept all of the other line items for which we did not hold. You have before you a motion, favorable action, on all of the other line items that no one wished to talk to. Requires majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. So we will go back to line 163 and line 164. Council on Aging wages, to speak to that? On my right?
Catherine Boyce, District 3. I know we're not surprised by this, but we have many seniors in Wareham who've been dependent on Council on Aging for services. We've all read why the recommendation is not to continue to fund Council on Aging salaries, but I think people need a chance to talk about this.
Is there anything further to be said on line item 163? 164, Council on Aging expenses. Someone wanted to ask a question or speak to this line? Seeing no one standing, then we'll take a vote on... I'll accept a motion on lines 163 and 164, as printed in the handbook. We have a motion in a second to accept, as printed in the handbook, lines 163 and 164. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It carries by a majority. We now need to take a vote on the total budget as presented by the motion that is on the screen, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five million, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-four from levy, state, as printed in your handbook. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we now will go to Article 7. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four million, five hundred thousand dollars as set forth in the Finance Committee Warrant Report Handbook for the departmental operating purposes and other town expenses in fiscal year 2015, contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 and 1/2 referendum question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Again, the Board of the Selectmen are the only ones that can place the question on the ballot. However, without this contingent appropriation, if the ballot question were to pass, there would be no funding. So that is why we are seeking to have this passed tonight. And I believe the comments that I made in the beginning are for this article as well. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0. The Finance Committee recommends a contingent appropriation to the budget, balanced budget, Article 6. The contingent appropriation will not take effect until approval of the ballot question at an election to take place in more than ninety days from the close of town meeting and no later than September 30th. If approved, this appropriation will be utilized to fund specific services, additional much-needed capital needs, and begin appropriations to the stabilization fund. This is part of an overall strategic plan to position the town of Wareham for the future as indicated in the included five-year projection. Approval of these funds at spring town meeting allows the Administrator to implement the plan if the ballot question passes. Otherwise, we would need... Otherwise, we would need to wait until fall town meeting. This proposal shows the voters how the funds will be used in FY two thousand and fifteen. Although we are only voting on funding these line items for the coming year, we have included the projections for the five-year of the strategic plan.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a menu-driven article, but what I will do is I will go through the lines and if, uh, someone wants to speak to a particular line, if you would say hold, we'll go back to that. Um, Stabilization Fund?
Hold.
Town and School Capital Improvements?
Hold.
Recreation and Lifeguard? Police Recruits? Police Cruiser? Library? Council on Aging? Additional Maintenance Staff? Clerical Staff? School in Town? Four additional math and reading specialists? Improved Technology? Student One Twenty-One IT Program? Multi-Service Center? Restore the Schools Round Three Cuts? Restore the Schools Round Three Cuts? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for being here. I rise in support of this article and to give you a brief history of how it came about. After viewing the cuts that needed to be made to balance next year's budget and the cuts that will be necessary in upcoming years, members of the Finance Committee, School Committee, Board of Selectmen, and the Town Administrator and Superintendent met to address the possibility of an override. First, we had to acknowledge that the town has made poor decisions in the past. We'd like to think we've learned from those mistakes. After all, one definition of insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting different results. We knew that we just couldn't throw money at the problem. The five-year projection showed that wasn't an answer. Any plan had to include meaningful cuts and restructuring. We needed to identify and attack weak areas that need improvement. And we needed to ask for enough money so that the end of five years, Wareham will be a fiscally sa- stable and viable town. So, these were the goals of the plan. Project over five years, including known or approximate changes to key areas, school choice, debt, benefits, and labor contracts. Reduce current budgeted expenses by four to five hundred thousand dollars. Identify areas that need to be eliminated, restarted, restructured. Emphasize cost savings or cost avoidance. Explore ways to reverse poor trends. Include a five-year capital plan. Pursue alternative methods of revenue expense reduction and/or shared services, regionalization, cooperative arrangements. Push back against state and federal mandates that are costly and underfunded or under-reimbursed and formulas like those that are used to calculate Chapter Seventy School Aid that are unfair to Wareham. And to build in benchmarks and communications for taxpayers as well as shareholders. This sounds like a big project. Believe me, it is. I hope you can count how many times you hear people saying cooperation and plan because that's what this takes to get this town back where it needs to be. Why so much? Because it's the right number, and that's what works over five years. I will not come back to taxpayers in a few more years and ask for more money. And why now? Because we have a committed group of people, including two talented professional administrators, who are united in the effort to improve Wareham. I urge you to vote favorable action on this, and when it comes to the ballot, I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my right.
Hi, my name is James Maxim, Seventy-Nine Maple Springs Road. My question is, what is the breakdown of the four point five hundred thousand dollars? As far as where is it going to go? And what is it earmarked for? Because I know that you could give the school department two million dollars. You can give the, uh, police department four million dollars, or whatever. But we don't know what it's earmarked for.
To answer the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, inside the blue packet, you'll see what's listed. Uh, I believe whatever page you're on, you'll see the first one is the Stabilization Fund, uh, which should be approximately five percent of the operating budget, so that would be for five hundred thousand. Town and School Capital Improvements, one point nine seven, one million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, four dollars. Recreation and Lifeguard Program, including summer youth jobs, a hundred and forty thousand. Six Police Recruits, including salaries, benefits, and expenses for four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Police Cruiser Replacement Program, two hundred thousand dollars. The Library, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Council on Aging, one hundred thousand dollars. Additional Maintenance Staff, salaries and benefits, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two floating clerical staff for the town, part-time, no, part-time with salaries but no health benefits, forty-five thousand. School and Town Shared HR Director, salary and benefits, ninety-eight thousand dollars. Four additional math and reading specialists for grades one to three, salary and benefits, four hundred and two thousand. Improved Technology Infrastructure for Schools, two hundred thousand dollars. Student One-to-One IT Program, two hundred thousand dollars. Convert Multi-Service Center to accommodate co-op in West Academy Schools, one hundred thousand dollars. Restore Schools Round Three Cuts, salaries, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And restore Schools Round Three Cuts, other expenditure, fifty thousand. Total of four point five million dollars.
My problem with that is, is that, um, the infrastructure of the town of Wareham is based on Municipal Maintenance Department and that based on, uh, cleaning the roads, plowing the roads, maintaining the roads, um, doing maintenance on, um, as far as, uh, basins are concerned, cleaning of the roads. I know there's a lot of people in here tonight that are worried about that. Um, my problem with it is, is that what resource did you give to the Municipal Maintenance Department in order to procure that, to get that done?
What was requested, which is additional staff, three additional staff members.
My, my, don't take me the wrong way, but my, my, uh, census of it is, is that we used to, eventually, we had forty-two staff at Municipal Maintenance. Now, I hate to, I'm, I'm an employee for Municipal Maintenance. We're down to six. I'm actually the mechanic now. My boss moved up to director.
Twenty seconds.
And that's all we got. So, everybody's asking a lot for us, for what you're giving us. And then, that's my, my whole question of it is, is what are you going to do? You, you say that you're going to do infrastructure. That is the biggest infrastructure in the town of Wareham, I think, as far as maintaining roads, pathways.
Time.
And all that. Thank you.
On my left.
Thank, thank you, Madam Moderator. Margaret Ishihara, Precinct Three. Um, I actually had, just had a series of, um, series of questions, um, for more of a breakdown on each of, um, the items that I'd indicated to hold. How would you like me to handle that? Do you want me to ask one by one and see if there's?
I would ask one by one, and if someone cares to answer and can answer them, we'll have them answer them.
Okay. Thank you. With regard to the, um, Stabilization Fund, the five hundred thousand dollars, this would be in addition to the amount that we already?
That is correct. The goal is to have a little over two point eight million dollars in the Stabilization Fund.
And I guess my follow-up question to that is what's the, um, I think it's probably a good idea, but what's the thinking, the philosophy behind having that sort of money in the Stabilization Fund when it's fairly clear that there are very critical needs for the operating budget for the, for the town based on the other items I'm seeing?
Thank you. That's a great question. One of them is, as soon as we reach the two point eight million dollars, we no longer need to fund the Stabilization Fund, which we're using our free cash. Then, free cash can be dedicated into capital needs going into the future. But a good Stabilization Fund allows you to have a better bond rating, which also allows you to borrow at a cheaper interest rate. We also saw earlier in the year, when we had an issue with the Department of Revenue, and they felt that our revenues were not going to come in within line for setting the tax rate. Their first question was, what's in your Stabilization Fund? And when we answered four hundred, and I think it was four hundred thousand, and at the time, they said, that is nowhere near enough. If you have a natural disaster, like living on the seacoast, and if something were to happen, we would be able to pay the bills during those periods. Having a good Stabilization Fund is just a fiscally prudent measure. And I know it sounds difficult to say, we're just putting money in a bank, but that is part of making this community financially sound.
Uh, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The, um, the next question I had was regard to the Town and School Capital Improvements, the one million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. I was just interested as to what the breakdown of those proposed capital improvements would be. And does that include the high school roof? That's a separate article, or, or not?
No, it does not. The high school roof article, that funding actually wouldn't happen until FY sixteen. We will, uh, you do a temporary borrowing during the fiscal year twenty fifteen and permanently finance it in two thousand, in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. But the breakdowns, the first item is the high school boiler for approximately fifty thousand dollars. The fuel pump system for, for a hundred thousand dollars. IT system and accounting software, three hundred thirty-one thousand, forty-three dollars. We're looking to upgrade that to go to a more efficient account, accounting system and also upgrade some of our IT. Mine at, the mine at, uh, elementary school, the chairlift, to bring it into ADA compliance. We're going to have to pay for that, sixty-five thousand dollars. We're looking to continue the LED light and equipment replacement, which would be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. The savings from that would be a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year on top of the previous fifty. So, we're looking to make capital improvements that save us money into the future. School security upgrade for two hundred thousand dollars, including changing the, the locking systems and making a safer environment. Police generator, fifty-four thousand dollars. If everyone remembers, the police generator failed during one of the last storms. They were keeping, they were shutting off equipment and keeping as low as possible, and that's one of our main hubs during any sort of emergency. And the final is police portable radio for fifty-nine thousand dollars. This is an important capital item because the portable radios are not working properly and can put the police department and the officers within harm's way, more so than they already are. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. That was, that's very helpful. And just for the record, I'm not opposed to the, I'm not opposed to putting this on the ballot. Um, I think that makes sense, and I'm probably leaning towards being in favor of it when it is on the ballot. But I think it's important for people to hear what critical services and capital improvements will be coming out of the four point five million dollars. And one final question, then I won't bother you anymore. Uh, there's a restore school round three cuts.
Twenty seconds.
Salaries for three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I, I might have heard part of this answer before when the school superintendent was speaking, but I'm just wondering what salaries would be restored, um, from the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars?
And I think the superintendent will rise to that. And if I've been answering harshly, I'm sorry. I didn't mean.
What's that?
If I've been answering in a harsh manner.
No, no, you haven't been. I didn't mean to imply that.
Our round three cuts take us below the level that we're really comfortable with in what we can offer. The round three cuts will restore approximately eight teaching positions, um, and some other support positions. The round three cuts will also restore supplies and materials.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Selectman Tropiano?
Thank you, Miss, Madam Moderator. Threw you to the body. I don't know why everybody came here tonight. I'm assuming some came here because this was on the ballot and are attempting to put this on the ballot, and they probably said, geez, we don't want to pay any more taxes, and we're going to come here and defeat this. Others are here because they have one issue or another that they want to see, and so they're here to make that happen. Well, I'm here to ask you, I don't care why you came tonight, whether you're for it or against it, what I want to ask you to do is allow the people of the town, all of the voters, to make the decision. To allow it on the ballot and allow them to make the decision. Let everybody decide what's good for the community, not just three hundred and fifty of us that came to town meeting tonight. You know, I have, uh, five children at home, and as they get bigger, costs go up. And I'm not a rich man. As a matter of fact, I'm, uh, you know, in the, in the blue-collar field, and I work, uh, to try to keep things together, and sometimes it's really hard. And this will not be easy for us, and we will have to sacrifice in some way or another for this particular thing to happen. Uh, and I will do it because I think it's what the community needs. Look, we need libraries. We need, uh, schools that work because they not only help us with, uh, our kids and where they're going to go and what they're going to become in life, they help us, they keep our crime rate down, which helps the police department because if they have nothing to do, they're going to get into trouble. I know I was a kid when I had nothing to do. I got into trouble. Uh, all of these kinds of things are very important to the community. Now, seniors, seniors, I mean,
Twenty seconds.
You put in your time, and, uh, you know, you deserve to have some services as well. So, what I'm asking you, no matter what you think tonight, please allow this to go to the voters and allow the voters to make that decision as a group and listen to the information. Try to keep your minds open, no matter what side you're on. Try to keep your minds open and listen to each other. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
On my right?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Donna Brock, Precinct One. And I, I support this article wholeheartedly as, Mr. Tropiano said, let the voters decide. That's what we need to do. But first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, this is, this warrant is the best warrant I've ever seen in twenty-five years. I thank you, Madam Moderator. I thank you, Mr. McDonald and your committee. And I, and I thank the Board of Selectmen and Mrs., Ms. Shaverhood for their cooperation, their civility, and your long, hard hours of work. You've worked very long hours and very thankless jobs you all hold. And I want you to know that the community appreciates what you've done, and I support you a hundred percent.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right, Mr. Maxim, you have used your allotted time. You have no more time to speak. I'm sorry.
Can I ask for more time?
You should have asked when you stood before.
Pardon?
You need to ask at the end of when you were speaking. Let's go through, we'll, we'll come back. Um, on my left?
Donna Ashley, Precinct Six. I, I too actually want to thank the members of the Finance Committee. I don't go out to the Finance Committee meetings because I, I'm kind of getting up there, and I don't like driving late at night, but, um, the Selectmen's meetings, but I watch every meeting, and I know what a struggle this has been. And I know there are people that are on both sides of this issue. I've lived in town for about thirty-five, thirty-seven years now, and I've seen so many things. I've seen, I've been to town meetings regularly every single year. And I know this is a struggle, but I have to agree with Mr. Tropiano that we need to at least let this go to a ballot. I have people that I care about that are on other sides of this, and I understand that. But I know that I can't survive with the same amount of money I survived with twenty years ago, ten years ago. And my concern is the library, the seniors, of which I have to, I can't really say too much because I, I guess I am one, but, um, the schools. Our kids need the opportunities that kids before them have had. It is a hard place, and it's not an easy place for any of us to be. But my concern is what happens to the town if we don't do this. I don't want to drive up and see the library closed. I don't want to see our schools falling apart. I don't want to see any of these things happen, and I don't think there's anybody in this room that really does. And I have to say that I, I've seen the hard, I've seen the, the tearing it's been and the hardness it's been for our committees, our Finance Committee, our Selectmen, to get to this budget.
Twenty seconds.
I also want to say we have a dynamite police department that really helps out. We need to support them, our EMS, and everyone who's working for us. So, I urge you to vote to at least allow the people to decide on the ballot and then support it.
Lady on my right?
Ms. DeKes, Precinct Five. Um, is there someone that could answer?
Is there someone that could answer a basic question for the taxpayers and what the cost per $100,000 valuation would be? I think maybe some, just a simple answer would help people make their decision.
To answer the question, if someone can?
$143.03 per year, $11.92 per month, $2.75 per week, and .39 a day.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, on my right?
I just want to understand, we as a body cannot put this on a general election. What we are here to do is say yea or nay to the expenditure of that money if it passes a general ballot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Maxim, um...
No, that's all I wanted to hear.
I'm sorry?
No, that's all I wanted to hear.
Okay.
She asked the right question.
Is there anyone else to speak? Mr. Slaven?
Good evening, everybody. Again, thank you for coming. This has been a long road. This has been going on for a long time. And this board here has, has had to make some very difficult decisions. This is not easy for us to do. We should have the ability to control and operate within our own revenues. This is how we do it, our own budget at home, et cetera. What has changed is the formulas, the funding for how the town operates. What happens is we get monies from, sorry, we get monies from Chapter 90, we get monies from Chapter 70, we get monies from Proposition 2.5. These funds basically are not working anymore. We also have 20-plus unfunded mandates that we have to pay for. We have, I don't even have the total of how many mandates are partially funded. Every day, we basically get a new regulation or a new rule that we have to implement with no funding whatsoever to do that. So as we go through, our costs keep going up. Our revenues cannot keep pace with where we're at. There is just no way that we can keep going the way we are. We go into every budget cycle in a deficit. And that's where we stand with all of this. I'm sorry, I wish I could find an easy way to make this all work. I can't. It's just, the numbers just don't follow through. What we need to do is try this five-year plan to turn the town around. And I just ask you to think about the five-year plan and make your own decision. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
On my left?
Is that me?
That's true.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. This is, the whole idea of an override and so forth is a question that's come up before in the town. And this is the first time since I've been coming to town meeting, which has been a long time now, that I've ever heard the word "plan" and heard it in such a way that everybody has bought in, everybody that's responsible for it has bought into the plan. It's really encouraging. I for one support the whole override question. I support it going on the ballot and I'll actually vote for it. But, but I think you all deserve, the elected officials and the appointed officials all deserve a thank you from, from the town for just coming together and, and working on a difficult issue and, and getting to a difficult conclusion. But in my mind, anyway, the right conclusion for the town. Thank you.
On my right?
Jessica Wilson, Precinct 2. I just have a question about the library funding. The funding that's on the warrant for the Article 7 indicates $278,000 roughly. That with the funding that's on the balanced budget only brings us to $402,000. And the Mass Library Commission has said that they will not approve another MAR appeal if we're not at fiscal year 13 funding, which is some $425,000. So if we're going to lose our accreditation anyway, kind of wondering, is there, are there plans to revisit?
I can answer that. There's a revolving fund for $70,000, $30,000, I'm sorry, that you have to add to that.
Great.
And it's 432 is the total that we needed. So yeah, the money's there.
Thank you.
Selectman Tataban?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. You know, a year ago, I had the unfortunate task of standing up here and telling you, "We didn't have our act together. We couldn't come in here with a balanced budget. You were about to be presented with two different budgets." That was an indication of a, of a failure. It was a failure in particular of the Board of Selectmen at the time. I was embarrassed to admit to it. So during the past year, when I was chairman and up until recently, I made it my mission to try to work with the other boards as best as we possibly could, to try to arrange a marriage, if you will, between our town administrator and the new school superintendent. While I'm happy that I think we've, yes, you may kiss the bride. Notwithstanding all that and notwithstanding the fact that I think, at least in terms of that in the past year, we've done a much better job of it, I am very mindful of what this override will mean to people unlimited and fixed incomes. I made a remark a few weeks ago at a joint meeting that people are going to be making different choices perhaps at the grocery store if this passes. We're asking for a lot of money. For a lot of people, a few hundred bucks is a lot of money. It does me no great pleasure to stand here and think to myself that because of the actions that we're asking you to take, that if we take them, somebody's going to be buying cat food instead of tuna to feed themselves. But notwithstanding that, it's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to act for the greater common good of the town of Wareham. That doesn't mean for the good of the government of the town of Wareham. The government is here to facilitate
Twenty seconds.
the goals and the desires and to meet the needs of the citizens. And I was one of the last ones who was willing to concede that we did need an override, but I see no other choice. So I'm glad of all the work that went in. I'm proud of everybody on the boards that was involved. I'm mindful of the sacrifice we're asking you all to make. And I ask you to support this and also to vote favorably at the election. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald yields to the lady on the left.
I'm Michelle Rose, Precinct 1. I move to vote. Sorry, Larry.
We have a motion before, ladies and gentlemen, please hold your applause. We have a motion before us to move the question that requires a 2/3 vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes by 2/3, non-counted, 2/3 vote. I now will bring before you a vote on Article 7, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,500,000 as set forth in the Finance Committee report handbook. Talked about marriage. All I could think of was about pocketbooks. I don't know why. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, please, please. Madam Clark? I believe if we stick to our agenda tonight, we probably could finish this town meeting by 10 o'clock. Madam Clark?
Madam Moderator, just a point. People, we still have some very important financial articles to go, water pollution control facility, et cetera, please stay. If you leave, we don't end up with an issue. Thank you.
Article 3. Ladies and gentlemen, I will recuse myself from this article and I will ask the deputy moderator to please take this article.
Can I have the motion on Article 3?
I move that the town vote to set the compensation of elected and appointed officials as follows. Town moderator, $118 per diem. Town clerk, $67,286 per year. Registrar, $700 per year.
Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
And can I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 600. This is an item that can only be approved at town meeting, so it's essential that we do vote for it. Thank you.
And for the record, do we have a second? Larry has a second. All right. To speak, is anyone to speak to the article?
The explanation and what's printed on the, on the screen is sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article 3. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion carries by a unanimous vote.
Madam Clark? Article 18. Can I have a motion, please? I move to approve the charter change in Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
To speak to the article?
Over the years, we've had issues with the dates of trying to get the different pieces all together in a timely fashion. What this article does is take care of the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, the town meeting itself, to get everything in place so we can basically have all the information and a proper timeframe that's actually accessible. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 700. We support this because the budget submission guidelines aren't really realistic for us. These changes reflect more accurately how the budget process really works.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 18? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. This article does require a 2/3 vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. A 2/3 vote unanimously. Article 24. Article 24 is a petitioner's article. If the petitioner would please come forward.
Madam Moderator, board members, fellow citizens. My name is David Fenton. I am from Precinct 6. I move to amend Table 625 in the zoning bylaws, Article 6, density and dimensional regulations by changing the residential districts column, which currently lists limitations of side 10 feet, rear 15 feet, height 20 feet. By placing an asterisk after each such number by placing a footnote at the bottom of the Table 625, which shall read as follows. For lots 10,000 square feet and under, the limit shall be 5 feet rear, 5 feet side, and a height of 25 feet. To insert such changes into Table 625. Basically, what's this is do-
Just a minute, we need a second. Have a second. Go ahead, Mr. Fenton.
Basically, what this does, since 1956 to 2002, the setbacks were always 5 feet, 5 feet, and a height of 35 feet. In 2006, they were changed from that to 10 feet, 10 feet, and a height of 35 feet. I believe in 2012, it was changed to 15 feet, 10 feet, and 20 feet for height. Well, I went to the building inspector and asked him what these numbers meant. Did they have to do with insurance or fire department regulation or anything? And I was told, "No, they were just numbers." Well, that's fine and dandy unless you have a small lot. And that's not just a number, it's a headache. Because if you want to build a shed and you have a 6,000-square-foot lot, put the shed right in the middle of your backyard. That's pretty hard on the wiffle ball games or the barbecues, you know, when you're talking around the shed. So basically, what this does, it eliminates the penalty for anyone that has a small yard. If you say, "Well, there's a zoning board of appeal to get a variance," that's fine. But to do that, it costs you $300 for the variance form, $72 for the newspaper, how much for the mailings is depending how many butters you have. Well, you're up over $400 and you haven't put a stick of wood up yet. So that's a penalty for anyone that has a small lot. And that is pretty fairly well straightforward, I guess. And I'll save the rest of my time for any questions.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted for favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 414. The Finance Committee had some reservations about voting on this article and ultimately split the vote by moving the setbacks closer to the property lines. You're going to get more density. It may result in more revenue from building permits.
Mr. Barrett?
Good evening. George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. Planning Board did hold a public hearing on this issue on March 24, and we voted 400 to support the article. We feel that, we agree with Mr. Fenton in that it does penalize people with small lots where space is a premium. And these setbacks sort of reflect existing conditions in the town where for a long period in our history, these were the setbacks and everybody was okay with them.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 24? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. On my left?
I'm speaking against this because I feel-
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Wilma Engerman, Precinct 4. I'm speaking against this because I feel that the height stated was always 20 feet. And the, also, we should have a size on this accessory building. I think we should have a size as an accessory building and no larger garage. And this is, I feel that we should prefer this study under those rules.
Are you making an amendment?
Yes, I'm making an amendment.
Would you mind to tell us, give Mrs. Engerman a form that she can fill out? We have an amendment before us on this article for further study. Is there anything to be said on the amendment? Have a second? Do we have a second for that amendment? Have a second? Is there anything to be said on the amendment for further study? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment does only require a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment for further study, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. Is there anything further to be said on Article 24 as was presented before you? As a zoning article change, this does require a 2/3 vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a 2/3 vote. Mrs. Engerman, we still do need your motion. Oh, I have it. I have it. Article 20. May I have a motion on Article 20?
Madam Moderator, we move to pass over this article, and they'll come back in the fall. They did not complete all the requirements at the time.
Have a second? Have a, just, would you want to speak to your reason?
Yes, the homeowners association was unable to vote and come up with the funds necessary to complete the road to the specifications the town requires. They've already spoke to us and they'll be back in the fall, and we'll put it back on the agenda then.
Thank you. Do I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Very confusing, but, but we voted favorable action 040, which means we voted not to, not to approve this. We're going to change this in the future, folks, by the way. We're going to go back to the old way. No action, so on and so forth, so you'll have more choice, it'll be easier to figure out. Trust me on this.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Ours, ours was easier. We didn't even vote on this because we knew it was being passed over.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? I'm sorry, Article 20?
Article 21.
Article 20, sorry. Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote, Article 20, to pass over this article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? May I have a motion, please?
I move at the town vote to appropriate from the community preservation unallocated funds under the category of recreation, historic preservation, the sum of $11,000 for an onset bathhouse engineering survey.
Have a second? To speak to the article?
Hi, David M., Municipal Maintenance. We're looking at this engineering survey to, to see what we can do for renovations to maybe possibly generate revenue.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 700. We recommend favorable action on this article as an allowable and appropriate use of community preservation funds as a way to deal with town-owned property. Since the town does not have a town engineer, community preservation funds will be used to contract the work. The hope is that the engineering survey will allow the town to move forward and find a use for the onset bathhouse that will generate revenue.
Thank you. On my left?
Angela Dunham, CPC Chair, Community Preservation, voted 500 in favor of this article.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 17? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. This requires a majority vote. At the town vote to appropriate from community preservation and unallocated funds, the sum of $11,000 for an onset bathhouse engineering survey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the Everett School, so-called, and as further described in a filing on file of the Office of the Town Clerk, from the school committee held for school purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including sale or other disposition.
Just have a motion and a second. To speak to the article, please?
Due to budget reductions, the Everett Educational Center, formerly Everett School, is not needed as a school and has been voted by the school committee as surplus property.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 500. We recommend favorable action on this article for the building formerly known as, affectionately known as the Little Red Schoolhouse in Gibbs Ave. It's a formality in order to allow the town to take any action relative to this property.
Am I right?
Sandy Slavin, Precinct 3. I'd like to know if there are any deed restrictions on this property that would allow it to be anything other than a school?
To answer the question, if someone can? Mr. Slavin?
I don't think we can answer the question thoroughly because we'll have to do a deed survey and search on it to make sure there are no restrictions. Most of the buildings that will be used for schools, some of them do have restrictions on them, so we don't have that answer for you.
So we vote this in, the town will have responsibility, utilities, et cetera, for this building, but we don't know what we can do with it until the deed search is completed, correct?
Yes.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 12? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article 12. This does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. The motion before you is, is that we vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the Everett School back to the town. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a two-thirds non-counted vote. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to approve the reoccurring business items as listed in Article 2 of the Finance Committee Warrant Report Handbook.
I have a motion and second to speak to Article 2.
The explanation for Item A, this is a housekeeping article which authorizes the Board of Selectmen and/or the town administrator to accomplish the legal and administrative details necessary to enter into agreements and contracts involving state and federal funds. Explanation, Item B, this is a housekeeping article which authorizes the treasurer to maintain sufficient balances in town accounts to avoid bank service charges. Explanation, Item C, this is a routine but important item because it complies with the state's law requirement that these public bodies report annually to the constituents and the town. Explanation, Item D, this is a housekeeping item to ensure that the town conforms to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Regulations under the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Title V Septic Loan Program. This authorizes the interest earned on loans made to individual homeowners be used for the program's administration and to make additional loans.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen voted 500, favorable action.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 600. Obviously, we're in favor of these. These are the articles that keep the town functioning as a business.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, under Item C, to act upon the reports of the Selectmen, School Committee, and Capital Planning, do any of these entities wish to give a report? Do the Selectmen wish to give any report? No. School Committee? No report. Capital Planning?
Hi, I'm Jim Jiberty, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. And we spent the whole year trying to come up with items with the different department heads that their, their needs. We prevented a, presented a five-year capital plan. And it's frightening. For fiscal year 2015 alone, if we were to fill the needs that the town has, we only need about $3 million. So if anybody's got the winning number for the lottery can, can help us out, that would We've submitted items to the town administrator that he has included under this capital plan, albeit only one of the ones that we submitted. But hopefully, that will go through. The other items that are included in the capital plan in your warrant are all water pollution control. We've been over those with them, and they fund their own. So that really isn't going to affect much of anything. In the five-year plan that exists up here, we have items that are kind of outside of the plan. We have stuck them in there because they're ones that you really need to be aware of. They're extraordinary items. These include items like the potential for a new police station, which is probably going to show up at some point in time in the future, a new school, which is probably going to show up, among others. It's big dollars. Big, big dollars. So the action that's been taken thus far tonight in putting the override at least to the ballot to the voters, I think it's a step in the right direction. Capital planning at this particular juncture has no funding mechanism to meet the needs and requirements of the people of the town. And if we don't fulfill some of these long-range items, we're going to be in deep trouble. I mean, if we continue this way without replacing items that we need on the capital basis, we're only going to be into a domino position of going downhill even faster. I mean, we, you can't get snow plowed without trucks. If we can't buy the trucks, they can't plow the snow. Minor problem, but that's out there. And I think we're on the right track. We made a, we made a, a commitment to at least put the override on the ballot, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jiberty. Is there anything further to be said under Article 2?
Madam Moderator, the report of the Finance Committee is contained in the booklet. Is that okay?
What's that?
The report of the Finance Committee is contained in the booklet, so we don't have to report again.
Okay. What Ms. McDonald said is their, the Finance Committee, their report is in your booklet, so they're not going to give a report. Anything further to be said on Article 2? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for a vote on Article 2. It requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to approve the reoccurring business items as listed in Article 2 of your Finance Committee report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the bylaw change in Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Good evening. I placed this warrant, I asked the Selectmen to place this warrant, this article in the warrant regarding dogs at Town Hall or any municipal building. I am not a dog hater. I have a chocolate lab and a Chihuahua. I love my dogs, but I do not take my dogs to Town Hall. My feeling was that it became a safety issue as well as liability. As we all know, we cannot predict what any animal is going to do, whether we have control or not, and that was the reason why I asked to have this placed on the warrant.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 223. The Finance Committee does not have a definite vote on this article. This article serves to eliminate pets from all public buildings. Those voting in favor of this article cited hygiene and safety and liability. If the dog is a service or assistance animal, there are guarantees disabled owners in their animals will have access to public places. People tend to be emotional about their animals, but when conducting business in a town building, pets are only a nuisance or a distraction. There is no reason for the town to unnecessarily be put in a position of any potential suits or for unfortunate behavior from troublesome pets. A minority of the Finance Committee felt that the objectives could be achieved in a less bureaucratic, more pet-friendly manner, through entrance signage, complete with please and thank yous.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 19? Mr. Tufts?
I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of the Finance Committee. I believe that a proper way to get this result is to do it through policy, building by building, and the Selectmen have control of those, the buildings in question in this case, and the school committee has the control of their buildings in their case, and it should be by policy. We don't know exactly what you could be banning, or me, I don't know what you could be banning in the future. You could, let's say there was a program involving animals in the schools, if the council on aging, you know, I just think that it's a, I, I used, it's a, it's like using a piece of plywood for a flight swatter.
Thank you. On my left?
Laura Trow, Precinct 2. I had some reservations about this. I know I go into Town Hall and Born with no problems whatsoever. I am also wondering if this includes such buildings as the restrooms on the onset pier so that if I walk my dog into onset, I won't be able to use the restrooms there, which are single-seaters? Is that included as a public town building? And I also like to, to say that I agree with the last speaker, who mentioned all kinds of programs, which might be therapy animals or, or any kind of informational program that would automatically be ruled out because of this. Would that refer to the restrooms as well?
To answer the question? Mr. Trupiano?
It would be buildings, and I don't know too many dogs that need to use a restroom.
I know a lot of homes that do. Ladies and gentlemen, please, please.
You could put the dog outside, you know, and then go inside, use the restroom and come out, yeah. I mean, you know- I mean, you know, hypothetically, yes, all buildings wouldn't be allowed dogs in them. Now, as far as service dogs, there's an exclusion for that. Service dogs will be allowed into the buildings because that's the law.
On my left?
Deborah Rose, Precinct 3. I agree with the Town Hall part, but we in this town, some of us, I can speak for at least two people, but I bet there are more, have a big concern that when we have to evacuate because of hurricanes, which is a big thing around here, we cannot bring our animals. But there has been talk about doing something so that there is a place for the animals to go. And if this was a town facility, that would mean that is all gone in the wind, or whatever you want to call it. So I have concerns about that part. We need to think about these animals when we have storms, hurricanes, blizzards, or whatever. I mean, I know a dog is an animal or any, is only a pet, but still, to some of us who live alone, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said about Article 19? On my left?
Michelle Rose, Precinct 1. I'm just wondering, as far as the town of Wareham and animals, what I see in other towns is that animals after Memorial Day, before, excuse me, before Memorial, after Labor Day and before Memorial Day are allowed to go to beaches. And now we're talking about another law against animals. What I have to say is, I think that what these laws are saying about this town is, we don't trust the people in this town to make the right decisions about their animals.
Gentlemen, on my right?
I move the question.
Mr. Flaherty, I don't see anyone standing, so I don't believe we need that. Seeing no one else standing and nothing further to be said on Article 19, I will now call for a vote. You're voting on Article 19 to approve the bylaw change as printed in the warrant? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It fails. Article 11. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to rescind the action taken on Article 19 of the April 22, 2013 Town Meeting.
Do I have a second? Have a second. To speak to your article?
At the April 22, 2013 Town Meeting, it was voted to appropriate up to $200,000 to buy or lease used or new vehicles for the school's transportation department from receipts deposited in the transportation revolving account during fiscal year 2014. At the time of this vote, the transportation revolving account did not have $200,000 in the fund, and the Department of Revenue will not allow this action. Those funds, once this gets disallowed, would go back into the revolving account. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 400.
May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and its recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. Our vote was 500.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 11? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article 11. Article 11 is to rescind the action taken on Article 19 of the April 22 Town Meeting. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 9. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town appropriate $5,694,050 from Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise revenues and $1,773,780 from the Water Pollution Central Facility Betterment revenue and betterment reserves to defray Water Pollution Control Facility direct costs, and that $823,543 as appropriated under Article 6 to be used for Water Pollution Control Facility indirect costs to fund the total cost of operations of the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise as shown on the next slide.
To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Please note in your blue books, Appendix 3 is in the back, and that has the information. This article seeks to appropriate some money from the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund, salaries and wages and expenditures to defray the operating and capital expenses. If you see the first page, the first section of Appendix 3, that is the revenue and expense summary. The second page is the line item budget, including salaries and expenditures. That'd be the second and third. And then the next page is the indirect costs, showing the breakdown of what the costs are from, including health and benefits and the departmental salaries that the general government and the actions they perform on behalf of the Water Pollution Control Facility. And then the final page is the capital items that they are, that are in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action 810. This is done in order to properly fund the Water Pollution Control Facility. As you may know, the Water Pollution Control Facility is governed by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, Fm1/2, as an enterprise fund.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 9? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article 9, which is to fund the Water Pollution Control Facility budget. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 10. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $795,601 to the Emergency Medical Services salaries and wages account, the sum of $298,669 to the Emergency Medical Services general expense account, and further to authorize a sum of money in estimated receipts of the Emergency Medical Services to be used to offset said appropriation in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E.
The motion in a second. To speak to the article?
This article authorized the town to pay a sum of money, $1,094,270, from the general account for salary, for salary and wages, which is $795,601, and the expenditures, which are $298,669. That's located in Appendix 4 of your blue book. This is an offset receipt, and what they earn through their collections are used to offset the costs of the services. To date, they have, from the billing company, we have $995,000 in collections, which would mean we would bring in just over $1.2 million. We anticipate the new ambulance, which has been constructed, to be in at the end of May or early June. Again, those items can change, but that's been the estimate from the manufacturer and the outfitter. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. Our vote was 700.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 10? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote on Article 10, which is to appropriate the sum of $795,601 to the Emergency Medical Services salary and wages account and $298,669 to the Emergency Medical Services general expense account. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Seven's done. Article 1 is the election of officers. We've already done that. Article 13. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town appropriate the amount of $2,708,922 for the purpose of paying costs of installation of a new roof system for Wareham High School, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass., 02571, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, known as the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of Wareham School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that town, that town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, 68% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA.
Have a motion and a second. To speak to the article?
Thank you. This is a lot quicker. The current roof at the Wareham High School is 24 years old. It has reached its life expectancy. It's over it. It is in dire need of repair, and the town has received preliminary approval by the Massachusetts School Building Authority for reimbursement of 68% of approved costs. Is there a presentation?
There is. Ladies and gentlemen, several students of Wareham High School have approached me and asked for permission to do a presentation to the body. I have wholeheartedly supported them and will allow them to do this presentation. One of the things that the Mass. Moderators Association has been working on and is continuing to work on is to develop a curriculum to bring Town Meeting into the high schools and to the schools around the state of Massachusetts to encourage children to get involved in government, to understand government. So I applaud these students, and I would like them to come forward and present their presentation. If you would please introduce yourselves at the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paige Vaskins, and this is Cameron Deekus. We're here to speak about the condition of the high school roof. We're both sophomores here at Wareham High School, and just in our two years here, we've seen the roof get worse and worse. The damage is evident with every rainstorm we get and any severe weather. The roof, as mentioned earlier, is approaching its 25th year, and it had a projected lifespan of only 20 years. We would like you to take a few minutes to look over these next pictures in the PowerPoint, bearing in mind that if we approve the roof now, we can get 68% reimbursement, and if we do not, that offer won't be available. Students, faculty, and teachers' life, excuse me, health is on the line.
So as you saw in those pictures, there are many tiles, skylights, and walls that have been damaged from the water damage. And we want students at our school to be proud of what we call our home, and it's really hard when there's mold on the ceiling because of the water leaking through the ceiling tiles. And the poor condition of the roof diminishes that pride. The unsanitary conditions lead to health problems because with the water comes mold, and that's not healthy for anyone. If we redo the roof now, we will spend a significant amount of, if we do not do the roof now, we will spend a significant amount of wasted money on more repairs and patches. And like they said before, if we replace the roof now, we will get 68% reimbursement, and if we wait any longer, we will not have that opportunity.
Thank you. I also want to thank the students for having the patience to sit through and go through our lottery process. This is another educational tool that they've been able to witness firsthand of how our Town Meeting works, and when they graduate and become adults of our community, hopefully they will become Town Meeting attendees and understand the process. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 900.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 13? On my left?
Jack Silver, Precinct 5. Just a question, if someone can answer it. The damage that's caused by the leaking roof, will that be repaired? And is there any plans on that being repaired after the roof is done?
To answer the question?
Part of the roof project will be to look at any of the damage that's on the decking, and we'll replace the decking. On the internal structure, that will be our cost. We will be replacing ceiling tiles, spackling the walls, priming and painting.
Ms. McDonald?
Leaving. I want to reiterate, and thank you, fine job. If we, if we don't do this now, the 2.7 million If we don't do this now, the $2.7 million, we'll have to pay for the whole thing. If we do this now under the MSBA guidelines, it's going to cost us $864,000, and that's a lot less, and we can spread it over, what was it, 10 years. So I would encourage you to support this article.
Thank you. On my left?
Yes, Donna Ashley, Precinct 6. I don't think there's any question here. I don't know about anybody else, but the past two nights sitting here at town meeting, with allergies that I have, I've been coughing and having to bring lozenges and water. It affects me. Our young people are being asked to stay here for eight hours a day plus, and it's not a good situation. I've been involved with the school for years. My son had to realize he'd been out of the school for five years this year. I think it really got to him, made him feel slightly old. But five years ago, it was starting to happen, and now it's gotten increasingly worse, and I think as a town, it's a responsibility that we have to support this and to let our kids be able to learn without becoming ill. And so I just do encourage everyone here to support this. It's a need. It's a definite need for this town and for this high school. I wouldn't want my child, and thankfully, he's not here now, but I wouldn't want to submit a child that I had to that, and I don't think any of us should do that any further. Let's get this roof fixed now.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 13? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. This article will need to have some borrowing to it, so therefore it will require a two-thirds The motion before you is to repair the high school roof. I will try for a unanimous vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a two-thirds unanimous vote. Again, thank you to the students for your interest and hard work in putting your presentation together. May I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to accept, is this all? Okay. I move that the town vote to accept the capital planning committee report and the town administrator's recommendation as printed in the Finance Committee warrant report handbook. Have a motion and a second to speak to the article. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a money article. If you could please just stay for a few more minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The FY 2015 capital plan is based off of the balanced budget without the contingent appropriation. As such, there's a limited opportunity for capital items. The items listed are as follows. In the general fund, police cruiser capital lease, the $99,334 for the six vehicles on a three-year lease with no buyout at the end of the lease. That is within the police budget that has already been voted on, so those funds are within that budget. The water pollution control facility clarifiers, $150,000. These are an integral part of the wastewater system and need to be resurfaced to prevent failure. Emergency generators, $150,000 for three generators. They're out of service and need to be replaced. These prevent sewer backups during power outages. Operations building, $60,000 to replace the roof. Blower building roof and HVAC, $36,000. A ventilation system roof unit no longer allows for proper airflow and does not properly ventilate the building, and the roof needs repair. Their ventilation has to do with chemicals, so it's not simply just moving air around to cool. Blowers and motors, $200,000 for blowers, which are a part of the primary functions of the water pollution control facility plant. Pump station electrical, $50,000 to upgrade the electrical panels and CPU for the plant's SCADA system, which allows for real-time monitoring of the systems. These are within the budget that was voted, so those funds are within that budget. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 9-0-0. The capital plan, as Mr. Flaherty explained for 2015, is very, very limited. Given the constraints of the fiscal year budget, the purchase or replacement vehicles for the Wareham Police Department is considered the highest priority. The additional capital purchases for the WPCF are funded by the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 5, the capital plan? Seeing no one coming forward, I will call for a vote on Article 5, that the town vote to accept the capital planning committee's report and the town administrator's recommendations. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? May I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to accept the layout on file with the town clerk of the following road as a public way, Cranberry Lane, and further that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to take by eminent domain or accept as donations portions of the privately owned property that include the layout of said roadways. Have a motion and a second to speak to the article.
Cranberry Lane was actually before us in the fall town meeting. They did not have all the pieces together. They have gone through, got meets and bounds, everything that's in place, planning board has approved it, and the Board of Selectmen agreed to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening. Judge Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. In accordance to the street acceptance procedure, the Planning Board did hold a public hearing on this issue on March 24th. We voted 4-0-0 in favor of the street acceptance. The roadway and subdivision has been inspected, and all deficiencies have been corrected by the developer. He should be commended for that. We don't see that happen very often, and we voted to support the acceptance of Cranberry Lane as a townway.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for vote on Article 21 to accept Cranberry Lane. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by majority. Article 23. This is a petition as an article. Ladies and gentlemen, I know after we get done with this final article, you'll all be in a rush to leave. I want to thank you for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for sitting through these articles and listening, but most of all, I want to applaud our Finance Committee, our Town Administrator, the School Superintendent, the Board of Selectmen. As a bystander over the last few months, I have seen them work tremendously hard to try to bring these issues to a resolution. I have never seen this amount of cooperation for many, many years. So the school committee and everyone who was involved, I think you can give them a big round of applause. Mr. Moe Kern.
Joseph Moe Kern, Precinct 2. I move that the town of Wareham vote to accept an addition to the bylaws by adding to Division 8 a new Article 4 titled Registration and Maintenance of Abandoned or Foreclosed Buildings, Structures, and Properties, as shown on the screen and printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? Do you speak to your article?
Yes. It's seven pages long, so I'm not really going to get into it. I pass out handouts to everyone. I hope you read them, and you have your questions, and I'll answer them after I give you a quick synopsis, okay? First of all, I start off with Page 1. The purpose of this bylaw is to help protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens by fermenting properties from becoming abandoned, protecting property values and neighborhood integrity, protecting the town's resources, avoiding the creation and maintenance of nuisances, and ensuring the safe and sanitary maintenance of buildings. Vacant or abandoned buildings are at an increased risk for fires, unlawful entry, and other public and health and safety hazards. This bylaw will help secure the town's public welfare by requiring all property owners, including lenders, trustees, and service companies in foreclosed properties to protect and maintain properties. Okay. The purpose, oh, okay, that takes care of the purpose. Okay. This bylaw is the exact copy from the town of Walpole and accepted by the Attorney General in 2012. I have talked to the Walpole inspectors. In fact, I just got through talking with them last Monday, and the bylaw is working with 10 properties they have now registered, 10 properties that are coming into compliance, and one property that they threatened, and they came into compliance without any court costs, not costing the town a dime with legal costs, okay? Outside the Board of Health there, in Wareham there, you see pictures of derelict buildings there. When I came into this town, there were 12, and there's still 12 up there now, and I think everyone used to call the, you know, the 12, whatever it is, the dirty, not the dirty dozen, you know, the dirty dozen, as they call it. Well, after myself walking around town the past five years since I've been here, I've come up to about 50 of them, so I'd like to call it the filthy 50 myself, okay? There is no reason the town has allowed this properties to be ablite some 15 years and longer. Our property values lose value, and we lose valuable taxes. Last month, Wareham auctioned off properties, and they recouped about $400,000 for 10 properties that were sold. These properties are now paying taxes again at a reduced rate whenever the bid price is. That's what your tax rate for whoever bought the property was just fantastic for them, and within two years, the town goes back and reassesses, and they bring it up to what the real tax should be. The bylaw enforces state laws by putting the burden of the property on the owners, not on the town of Wareham. As I stated, how this bylaw is working in Walpole, they haven't had to go to court since having this same bylaw on the books since 2012. I also received a copy from the Registration for the Walpole Inspection Services, Bundy, to help Wareham in its process of cleaning up our town as they are doing. Please vote yes and make Wareham a nicer place and cleaner place to live. Thank you. Please vote in favor of this article.
May I have the vote recommendation, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted 1-4-0, favorable action.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted against favorable action on this article by a vote of 0-5-1. The Finance Committee is concerned about the potential costs to the town and resources and legal fees. Although the Finance Committee acknowledges that there are some troubling properties in town, imposing mandatory annual inspections as proposed under this article, we do not believe is the best answer. We are also further troubled by the broad language of the article and feel it needs to be more narrowly defined.
Is there anything to be said? Gentlemen on my left?
My name's Martin Cahill. I'm in Precinct 1. I moved to the town approximately seven or eight years ago. I think the town is a magnificent town. It's got a lot of visual beauty, beautiful beaches, and the people are very nice, but I think a good portion of the town is falling down. It's falling down around diarrhea's, and quite frankly, I'm shocked because my job causes me to move from town to town virtually every day. I've never seen such a high percentage of a property that's literally moldering, roofs collapsing. I had a place right near my house that neighbors told me, sat there for 30 years without any work or effort taken by the town, as I understand it, to do anything about it. So I disagree with the language, the finding that the language is vague. I don't think the language is vague. Anybody who reads this article can well understand what broken windows, collapsed roofs mean. So I don't think it's vague, and quite frankly, I'm kind of shocked that there was a general finding among our administrators of this town against this article. I for one fully support it, and I urge everybody else who's seated here to consider doing the same thing. Thank you.
Selectmen Trappiano?
Yeah. The reason why we didn't support this article is, first, it doesn't really do anything except cost the town money the way that it's set up, and we have things in place that we can actually do that. The problem with abandoned houses and houses that aren't being cared for and taken care of is the reason why they're that, the way, is because the people don't have any money. So you can take action all you want, and you can't get blood out of a stone, basically. So what happens is, is you go after them, you want them to pay money that they don't have, and you don't get any money, and the town spends a lot of money to try to force it. And once upon a time, we actually had a business in this town that we tore down, okay? The body was authorized, and we tore the business down, and they took us to court, and we ended up spending, I think it was somewhere around $160,000 grand or something of that nature, and they get permission to rebuild it anytime they want. So these kinds of things sound simple, and nobody wants to have a building that's falling down or anything like that, and some of us maybe could do more for our, you know, taking care of our homes and things like that, but we all do it based on what we can afford. And the town does the same thing. We try to enforce these things with how much money we have, and this rule, this law, this bylaw, will do nothing to change what's going on. What we do have to do is use the bylaw that we do have, the laws that we do have, and try to force compliance. It's not easy, trust me.
Thank you. I need some help. I'm not quite sure if, I think Mr. Flaherty was next. Mr. Flaherty?
I know what you're going to say. No, I'm not. I'm not. No, actually, the previous speaker who was over there pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. It sounds like a long time coming, and I applaud Mr. Moe Kern profoundly for doing his legwork on this and prototyping it exactly by an existing bylaw in Walpole. Frankly, it's probably a baby step, but it's a step, and I heard previous speakers say that we have, you know, things in place to do it, and that's what needs to be done. I'm sorry, it's not getting done, folks, and I'm glad that someone's stepping up and saying, "Let's do something about it." Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, no applause, please, after a speaker. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. And to the previous speakers, I'm a resident of this town, and I drive by those buildings, and they drive me crazy, too. We fully recognize the problem with that. The concern we have is this bylaw doesn't really address the needs. It doesn't give us, we have tools in place, we need funds to get it done, and at the risk of repeating myself, we need a real action plan. And I think that if we can come together to put together a fiscal plan the way we did, we certainly should be able to come together to resolve this a better way than this particular bylaw, but I will commend the citizen for coming forth because we do need to put attention on this and hold the officials' feet to the fire until something gets done on it. But this is not the right mechanism to do it. Thank you.
I think, gentleman on my right was next, I believe?
Yes, John Slono from Precinct 2. I support, no, moving in this direction as well. I mean, there are a lot of buildings in play. As an owner of building, we have to pay a lot of money to keep that building up to snuff, and we do, every year, year after year. And I'd like to see other people do some stuff on their buildings as well. They need to be fixed up, or if something needs to be done. If you have a good building, you have to pay all kinds of services and fees to keep it a good building. You have a bad building, it doesn't seem like you have to do much except pay the taxes. I think it's just a step in the right direction. I don't, really, not a lawyer, don't know bylaws. but I just think it's a step in the right direction.
Stockman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I first want to recommend Mr. Mulcurran. Many of us have thought of this fairy tales years ago, once in a lifetime ago. Please, folks, let's support Mr. Mulcurran's bylaw. Let's get the step started. Last night, we sat here, and we talked about TDRs. We talked about TDRs ten years ago. How many more years are we going to talk about these buildings? We can drive by them all day and do nothing. Let's take a step in the right direction, support Mr... We have professionals sitting there, who's our town administrator. We have good town council, legal council, with Mr. Bowen and Mr. Whitten. We have Mr. Foster over here. We have our Board of Health. We have all these professionals that we pay, and they're willing to take a shot with this. Let's take a step in the right direction and not put this off for ten more years, please. Please support the article. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
Stanley Andrews Cranbury Highway. We just passed, or sending it off to the voters, a $4 million override. We don't have any money. Mark my word, what's going to happen with this? You're going to have the building inspector coming up. I need more help. That's going to cost us money. And also got to need a new car because I got to go inspect them. Then you turn around, and you look at the Board of Health. They can't handle what they're doing now. They have not done any inspection, so to speak, of their renters thing. We all paid a hundred dollars for they never inspected the properties. They're going to be asking for more help and another car. It's going to cost us money. At this time, we cannot afford it. We got to stop spending. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Ernest Margeson, Precinct Three.
I'm sorry, that was, my gentleman on my left was ahead of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On my left?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's late, I fell asleep, I took a nap. Please excuse me. Cliff Sylvia, Precinct One.
You're making me feel good that, you know, I've slept a couple times here.
Madam Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I rose to offer my support for this article and my congratulations for a forward-thinking individual to put this forth. And I also admire the fact that it's, you know, patented after a bylaw in a neighboring community that has been accepted by the Attorney General and passed all of the regulations. And obviously, it's on solid legal ground. However, listening to all of the arguments here today, it would seem to me that there may be, you know, some things that may not be conducive for Wareham at this particular point in time. But I want to tell you, folks, I agree with this article. I agree with the intent of this article. We have a beautiful town. And it drives me absolutely crazy to see some of the conditions, not only of buildings but of property in this town, just for lack of caring, for nothing else. So I agree full-heartedly, whole-heartedly with the article. However, I do, I do understand that there may be some problems. There may be some fiscal problems and also some enforcing problems with this article. I don't want to kick it down the road forever, but at this particular point in time, maybe an amendment for further study would be in order. So I would respectfully make that amendment.
We have, Mr. Sylvia has made an amendment for further study. Do I have a second? We have a motion for further study. Would anyone like to speak to the amendment for further study? Mr. Slaven?
I'd like to make this really simple. I'd like to ask Town Council what this particular rule will do rather than guess at it. Thank you.
To respond to Selectman Slaven?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker and to the meeting. The bylaw has about, the proposed bylaw has about six or seven components. First, it requires a building official to go out and look at a derelict building and make a determination as to whether it's been abandoned. After the building official has made that determination, the building official may then send a notice to the party who abandoned the building requiring that person to come into Town Hall. The purpose of getting the person who abandoned the building to come into Town Hall is to fill out a registration form, identifying the building as having been abandoned by that person, and to have that person pay a $100 annual registration fee. Now, if the party who abandoned the building does not come into Town Hall and fill out the form and pay the $100, it then empowers the building officials to write a ticket to that person and potentially one ticket each day because each day that the form is not filled out and the $100 hasn't been paid is an independent violation. If the person who abandoned the building at that point doesn't pay the $100 and doesn't pay the ticket, at that point, the town could either take the party who abandoned the building to court to try to get the tickets enforced, or in the alternative, or in parallel, have the $100 that wasn't paid for the abandoned building registration added to the tax bill. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
I thank Attorney Bowen for that, that explanation. But all it tells me is that it's going to make the building inspector do what I thought he was already doing anyway, which is not a yes. So I would urge not to vote this for further study. And we don't have to, you know, do all these properties all at once. We can take them step by step. But we got to send a message, and hopefully that message will get through to the other property owners. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? Not seeing anyone to speak further, I will call for the vote on the amendment for further study. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The amendment fails. We are now back to the main motion. Gentlemen on my right?
Yes, thank you. Ernest Margeson, Precinct Three. In reading this information that's been handed out, I would suggest that there is an awful lot of ambiguity in here. There's an awful lot of discretion giving to the Building Commissioner. I think that an awful lot of people in town have had a, probably what is not the best of experiences in dealing with the Building Commissioner, not the present one. Please, and I'm not trying to cast disparity on anyone, but in the past several years, that office has not been very well represented, I think is the best way to say it. And I would suggest that we need to be very careful about this and that people not give away things when there is so little control given to a single individual who has a discretion to be overzealous. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I too think you did a real fine job writing this. However, there is a huge difference between intent and enforcement. And what we're doing is we're talking about the intent of the article, which I agree there's an intent there to make some of these derelict houses going away. But the issue here is enforcement with manpower, the cost of enforcement. When you tell people that it's not going to cost us a dime, it is going to cost us a dime or more. So as much as I like this article, I think it needs to go back and be refined. And yes, there is some ambiguity in there, which was what we said earlier. So I'm not, I support the effort, but I think it needs some more work at this point.
On my right?
Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three. How many abandoned foreclosed structures do we currently have in Wareham? Can anybody answer that question? Can you repeat the answer, please?
Madam Moderator, to answer the question, my name is Robert Ethea. I'm the health agent for the Wareham Board of Health. That changes daily with the financial conditions of the town, the state, and people's personal finances. Foreclosures change daily. As far as abandoned buildings, for eleven years since I've been here, I've taken them to court. Most of them in probate. The judge says they're going to fall down before it's cleared from probate because there's so many owners on that deed, and nobody's going to sign off because some people are concerned they're not going to get their share of the pot when the land is distributed or when probate is completed. As far as the rental inspection, I know this has nothing to do with it, but we've already done eight hundred...
If you could just answer, you just answered the question, which was how many buildings we had.
Okay. I don't, I couldn't tell you how many abandoned buildings. I find them every day when I'm out there. I know on my wall, I put twelve to fifteen up. We've had some success with remediation in a few of them. As far as abandoned buildings that go into foreclosure and then people fix them up or redo the buildings, that's not true. We've sold them at auction two or three years ago, and they're back in the same condition, and those people are out of money again. So it's a tough situation. I don't know what the answer is. We've attempted to do something with these. I don't think that this is the answer, but that's the answer to my question.
May I continue?
Yes.
If a property is foreclosed, who's going to pay the $100 fee? If the property is abandoned, who's going to pay the $100 fee? Enforcement is, I'm concerned about the enforcement of this article. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I move the question.
We have a motion before us to move the question. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We now have before us Article 23. Motion is to vote to accept in addition to the bylaws. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The article fails. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like a...
Madam Moderator, move or dissolve the warrant.
Now, I started to see people up before you made your motion. We do have seven. I will take account a vote. I don't want any, any question on this article. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article 23, please hold your cards up high, and the tellers will now take account. Please keep your cards up high until the tellers have counted your row and told you to put them down. In the front?
Eleven.
In the front, eleven. To my right?
Twenty.
To my right, twenty. In the center?
Thirty-six.
In the center, thirty-six. On my left?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. All those opposed? In the front?
Twenty-eight, two-eight.
On my right?
Twenty.
In the center?
Sixty, six-zero.
And on my left?
Thirty-seven.
There are ninety-three votes in the affirmative, a hundred and forty-five in the negative. The motion fails. I will now entertain your motion to dissolve town meeting.
Madam Moderator, I move to dissolve the warrant.
All those in favor, please say aye. Pass it. Again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.